All right, six thirty, we're going to call this special session to order October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. We're going to start with invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Father, we come before you, we ask that you, that you give us strength and wisdom to guide the city and do the things that are right in your eyes. We ask these things in the name of your son, Jesus.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, moving down the agenda, number four is announcements. Do we have any announcements?
Okay, so we have two for October thirty first, which is Friday. The fire department has their trunk or treat and games at the fire station from five to eight. And then the city has their trunk or treat at the city park from six to nine. We are still welcoming any vendors that want to show up at these city parks. You can email myself or Mary, our city secretary, or call it to the office to register. And then we also have our parade, our vendors all day, the parade, the pictures with Santa and the tree lighting on December thirteenth, if anybody would like to register for any of those. They can also contact myself or Mary, what called the city.
Well, just to clarify on that parade, just a little bit, we're actually going to do our first real city big parade.
Through several neighborhoods.
Through several of the neighborhoods, so.
What day is it?
Thirteen, thirteen, but it's a Saturday.
It'll be an evening break.
And we'll be posting all the times for everything on our city page and Facebook.
Any other announcements? Moving on, number five, citizens input related to agenda items. I've got one, Mr. Gilbert.
Well, counsel, I'm Caleb Gilbert at two forty Kenny Drive. I just wanted to call and talk to you or come up here and talk to you about the alleys. I saw it on the agenda and just wanted to give you my input as a professional. Cities across the country are starting to get away from alleyways for a lot of reasons. And a lot of the reasons have to do with there is deterrent for developers and builders. They're also increasing home costs, they're increasing maintenance and code enforcement costs, and they're reducing usability of backyards, they're increasing crime, and they increase stormwater runoff. I just have a few sources that I want to run through. First one is being the U.S. Department of Justice. It's called the Problem Oriented Guide for Police. It cites alleys are a frequent access point for burglaries, vandalism, and drug activity, and provides concealment and escape routes for offenders to exploit. Next source is from the National Crime Prevention Council, which identifies rear alleys as a shadow space where visibility and ownership is low and common burglary zones. This is from the city of Fort Worth, alley maintenance cost study, which identifies alley reconstruction and maintenance costs are thirty to forty percent higher than standard streets per linear foot due to port access for equipment and personnel. They also report minimum residential benefits and recommends all alleys within the cities to be abandoned and converted. The Indianapolis Department of Public Works Alley Consolidation Program Study reports similar. Also reports the alley maintenance costs are unsustainable and provide little community value. They are also recommending alley abandonment and conversions. They also increase public liability and stormwater maintenance costs. The Kansas City, Missouri's Alley Management Program also finds that alleys are underutilized, high maintenance, and high risks for dumping and property crimes. Notes significant code enforcement costs and frequent illegal activities. The National Association of Home Builders Cost of Construction Survey noted that alleys, alley loaded homes are less cost efficient and require duplicate infrastructure. They reduce usable backyard space and increase cost of homes by as much as thirty percent. The Urban Land Development Institute's Residential Alley Design Consolidation Report cites that has very low buyer demand and increases cost to sales ratio. The Dallas Builders Association and the Texas A&amp;M Real Estate Center notes that alleys are costly, less desirable, and prone to security issues, and it leads to driveway clutter, trash issues, and low resale value. And the Texas A&amp;M Urban Planning Capstone Survey noted that fifty-four percent of alley residents report safety and nuisance issues versus only eighteen percent for those without alleys. I just wanted to leave those off to you as a professional in the industry. We have dealt with this for many, many cities, and it's just an ongoing issue. I know that there are some benefits to alleys, but the overwhelming negatives to alleys have trumped those. And builders are starting to go away from alleys, they're starting to go to cities without them. And frankly, we just don't have the staff or the maintenance or the budget to maintain another set of infrastructure for our city.
Any other citizens input? Okay, we'll move on to number six, new business update from the S T R Improvement Project. Shannon.
Oh, short term rental, sorry, I went blank for a minute. So we have tracked down approximately twenty-two of the Airbnb's in the city. We have sent them each letter certified in regular mail, with a copy of the ordinance and the application laying out what they need to do to get registered.
What does the S T R send for?
Short term rental. So that's our new ordinance we put in back in, I think, August, if I remember correctly. So we're trying to get it all implemented and underway.
So we didn't have to send letters to like anything that's a hotel, right? Or so whatever rental properties we have that are, do we have hotel rooms?
Hotels, no, we did not send one to the hotel, yes.
Because like Anchor Inn already files their stuff?
None of the Airbnb's that I found are in Anchor Inn.
Anything else on it?
What do the reports look like that we get about the payments from short term rentals? Do we know who that, who's paying that, or is that just a check that comes from Airbnb?
It will eventually, so the way our ordinance has it written, that they would, and this was the old ordinance, that they would pay their state portion, and they're going to come to us with their report, plus their state report, and give us the seven percent that's over the city. Is that currently happening? Very, very little. I've got only a couple that are actually sending it, obviously, that. So this project will be able to help push to get those actually recognized from the city so we can notate who's sending what they're supposed to, or who's not, so we can then go back and find them.
Who's responsible for accounting that? Correct? Do we expect to get quarterly checks from them? So we expect it to be done?
So ordinance is written to have a quarterly check along with their report. I did today actually just redo the form because it was a very outdated form. But we're going to get a little bit more information as to what their total receipts are versus what the tax would be. There's also a late penalty that's been added, that was added on the old ordinance, that if they are late, then there is a penalty added too that we can charge them.
We will charge them.
Yes.
Will Airbnb charge them that amount?
From what I've understood, they do. They already charged them ahead of time. That's still something I'm researching to figure out where the money's going. We still have other venues in the area that aren't Airbnb, and they're still not sending, but they've stated that they already send their money to the state. So I'm trying to track down with the state where it is, if they've sent the right amount, and if I need to go back to the property owner for their portion of it.
One thing that was noticed when we were finding the, a lot of them have Quinlan for the address, not West Waukeganee, so we need to get addresses changed on them.
Yeah, the B R B O, I think a hundred percent of them should.
That's where the post office is, so it kind of auto-populates. And that's why we're trying to locate all of them so we can track them down, track the property owner down, and let them know this needs to change. By the way, yours is ordinance, and you should be responsible for the taxes.
Does it make sense to give them some sort of incentive to change their property from Quinlan to West Waukeganee? Because to them, it doesn't matter, right? They, you know, they don't really care whether it goes to, they may or may not really care whether or not it goes to Quinlan or West Waukeganee. But does it make sense for us to make some sort of incentive program for them to change it from Quinlan to West Waukeganee? How do you, because you can't really force them, right? I mean, you can say, hey, you're in West Waukeganee.
I don't know that they, it really has to be changed. We just have to go and make sure we're getting the money.
Yeah, but I think it might be more difficult if it is in fact, it might be going to Quinlan, and then we'd have to go to Quinlan and say, this is, you owe us this money because this is really in West Waukeganee.
That's what I was wondering.
Really, we'd be going, we'd be going to property owner, say, you owe us, right? And if they say we've already got it in Quinlan, well.
You're not in Quinlan.
Yeah, we're not Quinlan, and we're the ones that owe the money to.
I understand, I just think that there's probably, there's a positive way to go ask, and there's a negative way to go ask. Do you care to stick, right? And.
I just a suggestion, I know we're about to ask all of them to register for a, with an application fee and a registration fee, you could use an incentive to work with those numbers.
Yeah, that's, that's going to fix it when they're registered.
That's kind of what I thought right there, is if they're saying West Waukeganee then, but how do we, I guess I don't know enough about how it's registered with the R B O or the state, and how the state divvies up that money that they get, if it's the state paying us or the property owner paying us? And do they do it?
Property owner's supposed to be paying us.
So the property owner's supposed to be paying us?
So once they're registered with us, they're paying us, it's just a matter of us needing to make sure that we're getting all of them registered with us.
As West Waukeganee.
But if the B R B O and Airbnb people, management companies, are the ones withholding this, then they should be sending it where this, where it's sent us through the controller. The individual owner's not getting that money, just being withheld.
Right, so I guess.
It's got to go somewhere.
Well, I know what was previously decided is that we had to have that ordinance in place first before Airbnb and B R B O could even touch the software. So when we create that ordinance and we're having to get back with them, those entities to say, hey, we do have this ordinance in place, you should be paying it, here it is.
The state should be collecting it, they're paying, right?
The state collects a portion, and the city collects another portion.
I think you're right. They need to send the check to West Waukeganee.
They should, yes.
Do you have an estimate as to how much it might be worth a month?
How much we're going to get a month? I don't have an estimate, it's just going to depend on whatever, kind of what the gross money is, and it'd be a seven percent of that.
Twenty-five years, right? Twenty-five, twenty-five Airbnb's or twenty pair rentals?
Twenty-two, but one of, technically two of those is one house, and they're renting out individual rooms. So we're trying to get clarification if they can even do that.
Okay, I just did a back of the envelope, guess what kind of revenue it would generate? And if they, let's, let's say it's, I think, I think that was calculated, or about two hundred and fifty a night for the weekend, and if they, if they were booked half of the weekend, it'd be about sixteen thousand a year. But it's not, not a great deal of money in the grand scheme of things, but, but it's a, it's a growing, it's a growing thing.
Definitely a lot more than what we're bringing in at the moment.
Yeah, there's, there's, there are twenty-two of them now. I guarantee you, we go back and look at this next year, there's going to be thirty-five of them.
So can we make a future, say for January, to find out what compliance we have? And, you know, I mean, I think, I don't think, I think this is something I wanted to follow up on, you know, over the next, we have a November meeting, we have a January, or December meeting, maybe in January, let's see what our compliance rate is, and, and, you know, any of the, any of the members that, or any of the short term rentals that haven't registered or whatever. And then let's also look at what the, what the addresses are that are changed. And if they understand the rules on what they're supposed to do, that may be part of it as well, right? It may just be education to the owner.
Absolutely, I think that's where we should start, is just kind of letting them know, hey, the two letters that were sent out do help that.
Right, so they've all gone out now, right? That, that gives them, that gives them sixty days.
They all went out last week.
So they.
The thing that's going to, thing that's going to take a little work is Airbnb will provide some data as fit, data related to the booking. They'll provide us, they'll provide us some data if we give them, if you give them ordinance, copy of ordinances and things like that. And they, they will make that available. The R B O will not. And so we've really got an auditing problem. And if we have to, we'll have to look, we have to look at that data. Mary and I sat through a pitch from, from a company that had some AI-based software. They would go out and look at the, look at the listings, look at their booking calendar, and look at their reviews and that kind of thing, and make estimates of what is owed, and then you could compare that to what you're actually receiving. The price of the one that we looked at was ridiculous. But I think there are some others, there are some others out there. And they did tell us how they, how they do it, but maybe, it may be something, it may be a solution that we can produce or mimic ourselves.
I just hate that it's not something that we can, that we can put in place and then not have to go out and police it ourselves. You know what I mean? There's, it seems a, it seems a little, it seems a little loose to me that there's, that the state's not more involved in, in collecting that money? Because if they're getting a percentage and they're not getting it, you would think they would be all over this as well.
Yeah, B R B O is the one that, that's really, at least from everything I've read, B R B O is the one that resists being compliant. I think they, I think back to the recording, you could make that compliant. But they, they don't have facilities readily available to, to get that data.
We might look at other cities that are currently doing this, and if they're working with them, how they're dealing with it.
Yeah, and I did reach out to, this has been, this has been long enough ago, it was, but I did reach out to, seemed like it was somewhere around Travis or. I'll be, I'll be glad to follow up and do that, do that, and get a good some more concrete.
Anything that'll help make it more streamlined for us.
Yeah.
All right, any more discussion? Okay, we'll continue on under new business, six B, discussion and or action regarding the preliminary approval of the drainage easements for the Waukeganee Plaza project to be formally adopted by the city upon fulfillment of the agreement upon the terms and the conditions. Shannon, are you, or you can give an update on that?
Well, there's not a lot that's changed since our meeting yesterday. So we got a easement for the property across the street. It would run between the development and the golf course from Sabine. This is something the city would be adopting, and the city would be responsible for. It is recommended that we make an agreement with the developers for maybe maintenance, so that could be city or developers that continue the maintenance on it once it's in. It's suggested that it be concrete. The developers engineer will have to design the easement and provide it to us. At that point, we would provide it to our city engineers and Sabine to sign off on. And we are waiting also on the survey for Sabine to review and fill in some blanks. I would say we're, rough estimate, I'd say fifteen to thirty days about it, I mean, minimum before we have everything put in place dependent upon the engineer getting the drawing.
Any other discussion on B? Okay, we'll move on under new business, six C, discussion and or action regarding the directing public management to incorporate concrete alleyways into the new subdivision regulations Ramsey.
Well, after hearing the citizens' input, I feel wholly unprepared to answer this, but, yeah, because I just, I don't understand how that would not be beneficial.
Before you table it, can I?
Yeah.
So the, or the new subdivision regs that we're working on actually cover alleys. They don't make them mandatory, but they do lay out what the developer would have to do should they want alley. So it kind of gives us an option, or the developer an option of having them or not having them. So at that point, the cost becomes more, it was the developer's choice instead of the city forcing the cost on them. That helps.
Right.
But it is covered should they want to have them, it's just not a mandatory thing at the moment.
My question thought is really based around garbage collection. So if we, if we have alleys, do we have rear garbage collection? Which is obviously a positive because your garbage cans are sitting out front of the house. But if we have rear garbage collection, and that changes the width of the alleyway and the maintenance required, and then obviously the construction of the concrete as well, because it's got to be able to withstand it, the garbage truck, or whatever, yeah, fire truck, yeah, fire truck, whatever.
That was my initial thought, is that taking, that takes those, that takes those trucks off the streets and puts them in the alley for the most part. And I, I'm no, I'm no engineer, but the alleyways, if they're, if they're looked correctly, looks like they would help, help drainage.
Do we have any alleviation this, this expensive?
I think we have a couple of dirt ones that are more easement than alleys, but we do not have any alleys you would drive down, nothing concrete, there's no rock alleys, not that I've run across.
Because I think, you know, it's expensive, expensive on the, on the, on the developer. I mean, why would, why would they even build it? You can put the trash in the front, at the curb.
Which is what we do now.
Yeah.
Again, it's not mandatory, so. Is there any action to take on this then?
Don't make a motion, just type it.
Okay.
I'd like it.
We're just tabling in general, or should we bring it back up, or?
Well, I would like to reserve, I'd like to bring it back up.
Just table for a future agenda.
You got a vote.
We got a vote, I got a second.
Greg Smirkin.
All in favor with an aye?
That's good.
Aye.
Greg Smith.
All right, moving down to number seven, calling for executive session, discuss some personnel matters authorized by Texas Government Code Section five five one point oh seven four, personnel matters. I guess we're moving into executive session? Six fifty-three.
I'm Jim Mayo.
That's your face, is that your face?
Maybe just.
Jim Mayo.
This one?
Yeah, you've got that one.
Okay. matters authorized by Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, personnel matters. I guess we're moving into executive session. Okay. Moving down to number seven, I'm calling for executive session, discuss on personnel matters authorized by Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, personnel matters. I guess we're moving into executive session.
Yeah.
Okay. Moving down to number seven, I'm calling for executive session, discuss on personnel matters authorized by Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, personnel matters. I guess we're moving into executive session. Okay. Moving down to number seven, I'm calling for executive session, discuss on personnel matters authorized by Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, personnel matters. I guess we're moving into executive session. Okay. Moving down to number seven, I'm calling for executive session, discuss on personnel matters authorized by Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, personnel matters. I guess we're moving into executive session. Six fifty-three. Okay. Moving down to number seven, I'm calling for executive session, discuss on personnel matters authorized by Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, personnel matters. I guess we're moving into executive session. Six fifty-three. Okay. Moving down to number seven, I'm calling for executive session, discuss on personnel matters authorized by Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, personnel matters. I guess we're moving into executive session. Six fifty-three. Okay. Moving down to number seven, I'm calling for executive session, discuss on personnel matters authorized by Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, personnel matters. I guess we're moving into executive session. Six fifty-three. Okay. Moving down to number seven, I'm calling for executive session, discuss on personnel matters authorized by Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, personnel matters. I guess we're moving into executive session. Six fifty-three. Okay. Moving down to number seven, I'm calling for executive session, discuss on personnel matters authorized by Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, personnel matters. I guess we're moving into executive session. Six fifty-three. Okay. Moving down to number seven, I'm calling for executive session, discuss on personnel matters authorized by Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, personnel matters. I guess we're moving into executive session. Six fifty-three. Okay. Moving down to number seven, I'm calling for executive session, discuss on personnel matters authorized by Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, personnel matters. I guess we're moving into executive session. Six fifty-three. Okay. Moving down to number seven, I'm calling for executive session, discuss on personnel matters authorized by Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, personnel matters. I guess we're moving into executive session. Six fifty-three. Okay. Moving down to number seven, I'm calling for executive session, discuss on personnel matters authorized by Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, personnel matters. I guess we're moving into executive session. Six fifty-three. Okay. Moving down to number seven, I'm calling for executive session, discuss on personnel matters authorized by Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, personnel matters. I guess we're moving into executive session. Six fifty-three. Okay. Moving down to number seven, I'm calling for executive session, discuss on personnel matters authorized by Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, personnel matters. I guess we're moving into executive session. Six fifty-three. Okay. Moving down to number seven, I'm calling for executive session, discuss on personnel matters authorized by Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, personnel matters. I guess we're moving into executive session. Six fifty-three. Okay. Moving down to number seven, I'm calling for executive session, discuss on personnel matters authorized by Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, personnel matters. I guess we're moving into executive session. Six fifty-three. Okay. Moving down to number seven, I'm calling for executive session, discuss on personnel matters authorized by Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, personnel matters. I guess we're moving into executive session. Six fifty-three. Okay. Moving down to number seven, I'm calling for executive session, discuss on personnel matters authorized by Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, personnel matters. I guess we're moving into executive session. Six fifty-three. Okay. Moving down to number seven, I'm calling for executive session, discuss on personnel matters authorized by Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, personnel matters. I guess we're moving into executive session. Six fifty-three. Okay. Moving down to number seven, I'm calling for executive session, discuss on personnel matters authorized by Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, personnel matters. I guess we're moving into executive session. Six fifty-three. Okay. Moving down to number seven, I'm calling for executive session, discuss on personnel matters authorized by Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, personnel matters. I guess we're moving into executive session. Six fifty-three. Okay. Moving down to number seven, I'm calling for executive session, discuss on personnel matters authorized by Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, personnel matters. I guess we're moving into executive session. Six fifty-three. Okay. Moving down to number seven, I'm calling for executive session, discuss on personnel matters authorized by Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, personnel matters. I guess we're moving into executive session. Six fifty-three. Okay. Moving down to number seven, I'm calling for executive session, discuss on personnel
So from Shenandoah, you know, if you go through that property that belongs to Malone, go through that into a SRA property, then you go to Hernandez property and the same guy owns another property in, in the banner addition. So if we can cut through his property, we can connect to the East Crestway Drive. So we just need a SRA to approve it, agree to it, and it doesn't have to be, you know, paved road, it can be just.
So when you say this property belongs to the SRA, is it sublease to somebody else or do you know?
No, it's just a SRA.
That it's just our SRA?
So we just go through them, so we don't have to get up.
What is it that's going through there?
What, so connecting a road through there somehow is what we're looking at?
Through in the middle of this property?
Yep.
No, it doesn't have to be through the middle of the property, it can be at the, at the, uh, at the border.
What's a road gonna be for?
To get access to the end of Rabbit Cove.
If you're looking at Rabbit Cove, it's more than this area.
So if, if you come down and you look at any of the other streets, you got Telephone Road, if you were to try to take and connect down through there somewhere, you're basically gonna have to build a bridge because you're crossing over a, a lower area of the lake, but it's still considered lake. So any of your streets, basically until you got up to Shenandoah, you would be dealing with that issue of needing a bridge.
They're doing all that traffic, the, the traffic on the road.
That's something that had to be looked at.
Something we have to look at it, you know, it can be a gravel road in the beginning, you know, just for emergencies, you know, and then, you know, maybe it'll eventually develop, maybe it won't, but at least there is an option. And it's good for these, good for these, uh, these two property owners, you know, we'll, they'll have access to, to seventy-six. And I will call it, so it'll be good for them too.
I believe Hernandez's is property, that thirty-eight, six forty-two is where he's currently clearing it out and has it up for sale.
Is it?
Yes, I believe so.
I think he has the front portion for sale, I don't know.
Okay.
If it's the one I'm thinking of.
Okay.
Could be wrong.
But it'll be beneficial for him to sell it too, you know, there's the street. You'll have to give us.
Are you sure we wouldn't need a bridge in that area? How low is that area?
I'm, I'm not sure, I just know that according where the lake typically goes up. That's something that's gonna take some studies, I mean, there's, there's a lot that's gotta go into this.
Yeah.
I mean, right now it's a discussion, but we need to figure out what and how we move it forward.
But to move forward, we'll have to talk to these, these two landowners and say, hey, would you be?
I think the first thing you guys do is get an engineer.
This is gonna be engineer.
There's a lot of water that goes through there too.
Yeah, this is, I don't think there will be any water.
There's, there's gonna be, there's gonna be.
There's gonna be water that flows.
Yeah.
He had, he had to build a pond back there for all the water.
Yes.
And there, there's still a lot of drainage that goes back to, a lot of drainage actually comes to that little area.
You'll have to see, you'll have to. You'll have to do it in a study.
So is the alternative to figure out where he could not let Rabbit Cove Road flood?
It's not just flooding that's a concern and an issue. Any major concern that shut down Rabbit Cove stops everything.
Other than May's Lane, there's no way out unless you go all the way up to, what is that, thirteen ninety-nine or something like that.
Thirty-six.
Or you go to thirty-six ninety-nine and then you've got seventy-one. Like those are your options.
Past May's Lane, there is no other way out of there.
Yeah, Lake or basically.
That's, that's outside city limits too.
Right, also another thing you might look at, I think, I think it's thirty-five, seven sixteen. That would be the property that runs behind us, the people that owns the property right here, there's two owners, okay, right here, and then behind us, all the way down to where that little slough SRA owns, that's one owner. And that would be that thirty-five, seven sixteen beside Malone.
This is.
And they go straight back to the.
There are no houses on that street, and it is owned by one.
Like where are the city halls like right?
So this strip right here and then everything straight back. And they're, they own the inside and the outside, not the street, this little strip of property right here.
Okay.
And then it goes straight back all the way to this little SRA slough that you're looking at, um, which does avoid Shenandoah and those properties. I don't know where you'd be looking at coming out on the other side, but that might be an easier option as far as dealing with one landowner. And the cost of redoing Shenandoah or cutting through someone's property. There, these people, I have a hard time even getting hold of them to maintain this property. Not be an option, it's landlocked other than right here.
It's open with three five seven.
It's like twenty acres, twenty acres?
It's quite a bit.
I think it's two ten acre portions.
There's a whole parcel inside city limits, there's another parcel outside city limits, and then there's that swampy area that you see opened up here. I just don't know where it would come out.
It looks like we can connect to Cove Road, right?
Yeah.
Well, it runs, it runs.
It drives into that press.
It runs straight to the lake.
I was thinking about cutting, cutting through that guy's property, three six. Three six, three nine, six five four.
This piece right here.
Yeah, that, yeah.
Why not go straight, why not just go straight?
But this is, this is.
Well, you're gonna still have to build a bridge, you're, it's creep there.
I don't think there's anything here.
But there, if, if that's water, if that's water, there's gonna be a creek that goes to there.
It's gonna be the natural flow of the water somehow.
A lot of drainage going in there right there, a lot of these properties, their drainage goes back to that. So I think really the first thing you want to look at is getting some sort of study done and talking with SRA. Cause they're gonna be your biggest, your biggest factor to all of it.
That's all that drainage comes in there and it goes right down there.
Is that traffic everybody's down here?
That would be traffic.
They did a small.
Yeah, Telephone Road.
I mean, it would be beautiful access.
It could just be a footwork, you know?
You can make it happen.
Right, it may only take a couple, and you're right, it might be better to go, oh, you know.
It really.
John over or whatever.
But it's just an option, I mean, in the body.
So the question is, how do we move forward because, uh, I think we're all in agreeance that it's something that needs to be looked at. So how do we typically move forward with this? I mean, I think we gotta get an engineer involved to give us the best option.
I can, I can reach out to Christie and see if she can give us something, I don't want to step too, too deep into it cause then you're starting to add dollars to it, so before we go any further, I could see if she can give me kind of an estimate of what it would look like to even do a study of the size. And if it's even something that they can do, I'm sure it is, but I, I don't want to speak ahead of really knowing.
Can you, if you're buying a grant, have her do that and then get back to us so we can figure out where we go? There's no action required other than we're asking her to, to speak with Christie and see what it looks like.
Yeah.
Any other discussion at this time on this one?
No.
Okay, we'll move on to nine B, discuss, discussion on possible adding code enforcement contracts with All American Dogs. Uh, James, that's you?
It's me, so, so we, during the budgeting time, you know, we had, we had budgeted for an assistant to Shannon. If we were, and I know that an assistant can do a whole lot more than court enforcement, but if we were to just take the court enforcement out, we can do the court enforcement for about ten thousand bucks. Um, the assistant would be about thirty thousand. So we have a cost savings opportunity, I'm not saying that we shouldn't have an assistant, we're saying if the court enforcement out of these guys, or, or give it to these guys, ten thousand dollars, they'll hopefully do a pretty good job, you know, we, they do it in seven cities around us. So, and I'm not saying we wouldn't have an assistant, you know, we talked about that too. But this way it can get done, you don't have to train anybody, you don't have to go through all these things. They can, they can do it right away, ten thousand bucks a year. And I know that they, you want a few more things in, for them to do a few more things, that I think if we can sit down with them, that, you know, talk and make them agree to some of those things.
So if I'm not mistaken, the last, um, meeting that was had regarding this, there was more data that wanted to be collected.
As far, so, uh, I reached out with, I attempted to reach out to three of the cities that he requested, two of them were not even at the office, they're very, very small cities. Uh, but I don't even think they would have a code enforcement department, they are the code enforcement department. Uh, I did speak with Cato and they kind of gave me the rundown of their process, uh, what they, they rely heavily on the court clerk, which he had mentioned that, that he would come in with the issues, uh, of course he would check in, but then he would get with the court clerk, getting addresses, and the court clerk would then turn around and develop the notices, uh, mail out the notices and do, the follow-ups to be going to Ameri- All American. All Americans then, uh, would follow up and work with them, but my biggest thing that we needed to figure out is what process that looks like and how, when did, when the Shannon need to take a specific action on one of the addresses or whatever. What point does it need to go into higher level management? That's kind of something I really wanted to see council sit and discuss through this workshop is what that process looks like. Um, I know Lee has several questions on the contract and I'm, I had questions as well, so I know that really needs to be looked at before we execute.
The one thing I liked about this is that let's just say it doesn't work out, doesn't work out. We can cancel it with no, no costs, we can cancel it with thirty day notice. We say, okay, now we don't like them, you know, we don't like the way they do things, cancel it, thirty day notice, done. You know, no questions asked, they can cancel it, we can cancel it, and then we'll say, okay, let's just go and fire somebody. So this is the benefit of this, you know, so there's not a lot of risk.
Yeah, so I, I don't disagree with that, um, I don't think we've defined what we want them to do well enough. And from, I, I watched the, cause I was on a plane and I watched the, the meeting where they spoke and they spoke about what they will do or what they can do, and then there were questions about who did the, who does the paperwork after they go and do this, and then there were questions about, well, what if, what if there's more than that? And I think as a, as a council, before we decide whether or not we want to hire somebody to do something, I think we need to define what it is we want them to do. And I don't think we've done a very good job of saying, if we define this, 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 and this in tasks for that code enforcement contract, then the other half of that question is, what does that alleviate from our current code enforcement department? And is the value there for us to be able to do that, right? If we're gonna pay eight hundred bucks a month to All American Dogs to do code enforcement, then what enforcement are they going to do? And what is that gonna alleviate off of code, uh, enforcement today's plate? And allow that department to do instead of this? And is there a balance? And I don't think we've had, I really don't think we've defined what we're gonna ask, um, All American Dogs to do very well. And I think it might be very gray as to whether or not we fire them or keep them three months from now because we might have differing opinions on what their, what the expectations are versus what the, uh, output is from.
It's like this, man, it's like, you know, anything, anything any of us do, you know, the ones they say they, they do court enforcement for seven cities, it's not like that, you know, it's okay, I'm doing court enforcement for this little thing or, you know, there, there is a system, you know, there's an expectation of what a court enforcement is, they do that for so many cities, right? So I'm not saying that, you know, we can't ask a question, we write down exactly what we want, sit down with them, any contract is like this. You sit down with them and say, we want this, this, and this, but you don't have this, this, uh, item number five. So we just ask them to add, it's not like, you know, it's just.
I, I agree, I agree with you. It's not like rocket science. Right, but I agree with, I agree with you then, this, we, but, we're, we're gonna sit down, but I think we have to define what we're asking.
Do that, they should be knowing that, you know, hey, these are the things we do in court enforcement, just put it in, in writing.
If we had, if we had like a workflow, how, how does, what, what starts the process? Picture, a letter, a citation, whatever, and draw it out, and let's see where those, where they insert into it. Uh, and, and, and what do they alleviate? And I think we, I think we can put it on paper, something that we can understand, but I, I also agree with Frank. We, we need to do that before we get into an agreement because we don't know what to expect and they don't know what to expect.
But Shannon, can you?
I'm not saying we gotta do anything now, I'm just saying, let's just write it down.
Can you, can you lay it out? And then at the same time, lay out where you think that it should stop because code enforcement can go way past just grass and, you know, junky cars and all that, where do we get into tearing down buildings and all that? So we need a kind of layout of the structure of it where we feel like there needs to be a stopping point and it needs to be moved up here. In that structure, how it's gonna work, how it works now with, when, say you're doing it versus when they do the citation, where it's gonna come in here, who's gonna handle the court set of it? Recurring, any of that kind of stuff, can you do a complete layout? So the council has a full understanding of, from A to Z.
Now, are we trying to do this for the November agenda or the next one to come out first?
December. Give her, yeah, we treat, December's five weeks, so is that, is, is December a reasonable request?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, if you can do that for us by December, that gives us something for the December meeting to be able to talk about it and look at and define.
I understand this is a workshop that I can enter into this.
Yes, ma'am.
So I think from my viewpoint, one of the benefits of the company, if they're beneficial enough, is we don't have to provide benefits for them.
Yes, ma'am.
Or taxes for them, that sort of thing, it's a benefit. It's only a benefit if they can relieve enough that she doesn't still need an assistant.
Yes, ma'am.
So what y'all are telling her to do, I think, you know, it's, where are you gonna draw the line to see if it's on the court board? Then what he originally said, you know, he could provide five hours a week or something like that, that's not very much in my opinion, but that's what he was offering up for his eight hundred dollars.
Exactly, that, that's exactly what we want, we kind of want to see what, we want to see what that balance is. So is there, is there enough benefit in not having a, an assistant? To having an assistant and look at the, look at the, the cost of both? And, and also, and also the, the production of both, right? Can you get more from an assistant that's shared among multiple departments? And use five hours a week for code enforcement, five hours a week for something else? I don't know, but I'd sure like to be able to look at what All American, I just don't feel like I know what All American Dogs is gonna do for us, yet.
He doesn't know what y'all want him to do.
That's exactly right, we have, we haven't defined for him what we expect from him. Yeah, so, cause he may come back and say, what, what you're asking for is twelve hundred dollars a month, or I can do that for two fifty a month.
So as you lay that out, Mary, will you do like we did with pros and cons? Um, just like we did with that whiteboard? That way we can see exactly, you know, the pros and cons of it all.
Yeah, I think we're still very in the early stages of this before we even start looking at a contract, we need to figure out where, how, how it benefits us as a city versus how it.
Yeah, when, when I looked at the contracts, obviously I know legal, legal, but when I looked at the contract, I, my, my list of questions was longer than the contract. And so there, there, there are just a lot of things that we've got to, there are a lot of things we've got to answer.
Yeah, let's sit down and talk.
Just need to think of it.
Okay, so there's no action on here, although we've asked the ladies to, to take a look at some of that for us.
And Shannon, if, if you want, if you want me to help you develop a flow chart, a workflow, on that, I'll be glad to do that.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, so we'll move on to number ten, citizens input non-related to agenda items. I don't have any. Nothing on that, moving on to number eleven, adjournment, motion?
Make a motion, yeah.
I got a motion, I got a second, all in favor?
Alright.
Aye?
Aye.
Seven thirty-seven.
That's it with me.
Look at me.